Somebody on staff.
Eric.
We do.
The first thing.
No, this is why it's your. I am the guy right now. Yeah, and. But at least if you're going to replace that. That's how we're doing.
It doesn't take much time.
And then. That I know of. That was a question. And I thought. We need it for. The. Details.
Yes, makes sense.
I have. I could probably stand in tense less than zoning. I have built. A lot of. In their engineering squad.
Just to bust it out.
That has been a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's always the big one, you know, what you want to do.
Recording in progress.
All right, follow me to order. And let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who stand. One vision under God. To this hope. The virtue of. Oh.
I, the customer of children.
Here.
Customer of those here. Customer of Bernie.
Eric.
Customer of ready.
Here.
Customer of Coleman.
Here.
All right, so we will now open public comment. If you have anything to say, just step right up here and state your name. We won't make any comments back. You have up to three minutes. And we'll take vendor advisement. Anybody?
For record, I'm much better as I live in Long Beach. I called with you all on an email concerning this city property next to my home. Part of my email address about ways that accumulate some city property next to my house. Across the street next to my neighbors, I can't straighten my piece. City code car dash two dash four dash one. The human reasons of celebration in England. And five dash two dash four dash thirty four C. Maintaining buildings or premises. In this order later in sanitary position. Both addresses issued to codes five dash two dash three. Public nuisance declared to be common. My email purpose was to notify city administration. To maintain the properties supporting to build. And in crisis situations that allow. Our late nuisance codes. And now I heard it's a dollar park thanks that area would think of your down part. Sorry, get the hook move on. Okay, so the other purpose of my email was to bring this issue to council attention. So they can think about setting policies and orders. Related to identity having to grab your power better than if they don't have pets. I was also going to ask when the workshop on council rules would be held. The word on the street is it's going to be put off until after the election or not until next year. The council unanimously voted to have this workshop four more months ago. But who's making this decision to postpone this workshop? And was council consulted without any delay, even affecting the matter? The council rules. Resolution was changed in April twenty twenty. And April twenty nineteen enacted and February two of twelve. Section eleven point two of council of states. Amendments, revisions, or additions to these council rules. Shall be where resolution approved by the city council. Remind council, you do not work for the mayor. And it's the council who sets city policies involved. But how do you expect to do this in here? Not even given an opportunity to discuss issues in an open public forum. A few meetings ago, the mayor asked before concluding the council meeting. If any of the council had anything to bring up. Adding a council discussion portion could be as simple as that. And a one line addition to the council rules. How does council expect to be a voice for people? When they can't even give a voice to themselves? And one of you will be mayor. And I hope you will want to be. A strong, pretty wise council. Given ideas and turn issues are openly discussed. And council has given an opportunity for these discussions. At each council meeting.
Anybody else for public comment?
It's like.
Oh, yeah, if you're out there in Zoom land, there we go. Kelly Beach.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Firstly, I just noticed something today between my house and Oman. So whoever patched the great big hole, I appreciate it very, very much. Secondly, the reason why I'm on tonight is I just wanted to put a beg in whose ever ear regarding golf carts and what we can and cannot do to possibly get an ordinance passed where we can use those in the city limits and possibly down in Owaco. I did speak with Helen briefly. Where we could. And Elizabeth, where we could possibly have those for special occasions. With certain parameters and guidelines. Where a lot of us would be more than happy to pay. To to the city yearly to be able to run those around. And I know that there's about seven or 10 of us who would like to do something with our golf carts where we could help for festivals, back and forth, where we did it for sensations and it worked out beautifully. Of course, with very specific guidelines and not wreaking any havoc on any of our city streets. So I just wanted to put two cents in on that, hoping that we could get some form of ordinance put together.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody else out on Zoom that would like to make a public comment, just use your little hand. Icon and we will call on you. All right, see none. Close public comment. And now I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. The consent agenda. And now moving on to eighty twenty three thirty eight resolution. Twenty twenty three dash oh eight commercial inspections tab C.
So this is the resolution giving us the authority to do those commercial inspections. But these were passed at an earlier date. We were under the impression we can leave them under the international building code, but this is just clear. I have a piece of code to reference those that are asking about it. That's a local because of that, not necessarily it's. It is. Or not for, and we recognize. So we ran this far to the attorney. This is what we recommend.
Does anybody have any questions about the language in the code?
I move to approve AB twenty three thirty eight. I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right. We had a Washington AB twenty three thirty nine Washington State Parks recreational use agreement. That geez. Finally.
This is the amendment to the property agreement which gives us the rights to support board walkover construction. It will be twenty nine years, seconded from the end of the date, the last one, twenty five years from twenty twenty three. Yeah. Last piece of the puzzle needed to do in order to go legal review with economic development.
Great. All right, anybody have any questions on this? Let's look for a motion.
A motion approved AB twenty thirty thirty nine. Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right. I was a while coming. AB twenty three forty EMS task force tab E.
Thank you, Mayor Boettman, council. Some of you may have been here long enough to know what the EMS task force is. Yeah, but I'll give you this a brief history of coming of EMS staff. So back in about about six. The city was covered for EMS service by fire support. And they said, hey, look, Long Beach, we want you to pay just like our customers are paying us. And so we, Owaco and Chinook, fire agent two. Put in our options and one of them was to create this task force EMS, which allowed us to decide how we're going to get our EMS services. And so what this did when we created it was to allow two people from the Rock of two of them on. Fire agent two and sure. To be on this board and help make those decisions. Actually, kind of like to make the decision. So over the years, we've had council members on there. We've had fire chiefs on there, city administrators on there. And so we had a meeting here just recently. We talked about it is we got new chief. We think he'd do a good job on there. And so we want to get him on there. And the other comment right now, we have Patrick ready. It was Patrick and myself were the representatives, but just with the history, I think it'd still be good to have the staff that are on. And you as a council could say, no, but my staff information, we have myself, Kyle.
I think he should be. He is the chief.
Absolutely.
So we're just switch guy with me.
Yeah, so that would just mean direction of the councils to do exactly that. Should be a motion to have Kyle and myself on the EMS passport representatives.
I'll make the motion that I'll replace me on the EMS task force. I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
And they.
And they. And they. That's a good. That's a good.
All right. I, any other discussion on that? I didn't really give you a report. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Well. I will do the oral reports.
Pretty sound.
Yeah.
So just briefly, watching sales tax numbers are in the books. We're still working on that one. A vendor as far as whether it's right or not, we have found out they're appealing the adjustment was made and they're hoping to give them one back. But I don't know if that's the case. I did talk to the Chinese up there, Paul Black, and he said they were actually down. One month, two months in their sales tax, however they were at. If you look at it, we're actually looking pretty good always. And then I brought this with me, so I wanted to hand it out. There are questions that are going around. I've got lots of accounts for the audience, I think. There's questions going around. About what the, what we do with that commercial inspection. And so this form is the one that I sent you. Yeah, it's all just one page.
Oh, okay, I got an extra.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, it's all one page. And this is one that I put together when we talked about being opposition in the first place. We had talked about. About it. So when I talk there, Dave, this goes to everybody who's going to do a commercial inspection. And commercial buildings and vacation rentals is pretty much what it reflects to. And then in some cases, there are additional things that will come up as type of the restaurant. As your good business that there. You have cocaine heat and it's your cocaine that does have a bullet drive. It's what you have. So some will change a little bit, but this is the basic form for each exercise. So first question about that. I just wanted to kind of answer that question.
One of the questions that came forward was we were going to be able to provide a special day to have fire extinguishers. Extinguishers inspected, and that isn't something that we provide here. So I think just letting people know they have to take care of their fire extinguishers.
We're not certain that I do that. I haven't paid somebody to do ours.
Yeah.
So yeah, if you got any questions or anything comes up, feel free to go to a meeting, talk to Eric Reicher. He's our code enforcement and person doing these inspections. And he's been a little more than a month. He's learning as he's going. You kind of every day there's something learning. What's this about? How's this work? I think it's going to expand to a lot more. I mean, we talked about things that fire, you don't have to talk about, but you know, pre-packs and buildings, you know, push your emergency contact. All those things that in the middle of the night, you don't know the answer to. Those are things he's going to help find out as well. So it's going to be a good thing that city and it's going to help us keep our insurance very low and I'm not going to say it's going to lower it, but I'm hopeful it'll lower it. But they come down every five, 10 years inside them. So that's what I had on that. And then I, it was in the email and everybody got the agenda. We do need a quick slow session. We were very close with this department. I feel like I didn't update on that. Any questions for me before I? Maybe, all right.
Um, Dave talked a little bit about Eric. He is being very proactive and kind of going throughout the city. Every couple of days, he can do things he did not instead of go by the shoes. He is touching on. Yeah, scheduling is fact. The whole part you're. A lot of them are up right now. So I'm going to have to get it upon course it is. Um, a couple of complete questions that can I almost have from this thing here? Yeah, I have to be able to put her on the board law. Uh, we had our SAO. We're going to be very, very coming in second, very hybrid model in three years where they've got it. So what we can individually do with any video and person we can help. But it, right?
Are there? I understand we have two active condemnations right now in the city.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
Great. And then they.
They're just taking time.
Yeah, yeah. Things come up.
Well. To give you an example, we were doing the asbestos inspection on one of the properties. And there were so many fleas that ran out of the building. So then we had to have a red pass going and fog the building. And so then we talked to him and say, yes, we fogged the building. When can we come back? But we can't come back until it's cleaned out because there's still, you know, knee high throughout the whole building. We can't check those things. So we're looking at it, going to get that done as well.
Send it back.
Did you?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it's just part of the process. And I was in the neighborhood the day I went down there to take a look at myself, see what's changed. And everybody thinks, boy, the neighbors got to be happy that all the traffic's gone. At the same time, they got to be wondering, when is this going to happen?
Right.
Yeah. But I, I'm thinking, you know, we got
The neighbors.
Twenty days. Twenty days probably to get through where we can get that cleaned out so that they can actually check for asbestos. That takes about a week, two weeks. And then depending what they find, that's another week, two weeks could be asbestos cleaned out of there. And then at that point, we can actually go out, but we're going to try to fast track it. We're going to do a slower process to make sure that David asbestos out there. We've got a contractor ready to go. Get rid of that. But that'll come to you guys as.
Yeah, so one guy that has asbestos that's in the company. And I have to pour it in clean out. If you don't, it's there. And then like after. So.
Yeah, there's a lot of balls in the air. And we're working on the other one at the same time.
Yeah. And it's worth it. The ones by the art center there is.
Oh, my gosh, it looks so much better.
They just keep tearing more things out. I thought they had everything torn out of it. It was like, no, we're going to take that up too. It's like, yay. They don't have rats running through the concerts anymore.
Whoa.
Well, when I visited you last, sometimes past, so we're hearing up for the kite fest. Crew's been working their tails off. It's a model sprint right now. So they're working bathrooms, garbage can, trash. Keeps us really busy, keeping everything water. Glad to see the boardwalk moving on. We've been spending a lot of time this year, keeping nails and screws down.
Yeah.
Trip hazard is for some reason. It's just the rough this year. I think the dry weather isn't helping, but it's definitely going to make a big difference as that all goes down. Um, so waiting on the parts for Colerson playground, but we're still pushing on that. We'll get the wood chips in right after that. Uh, we did break the top dresser in. Crew went out last week at Colerson Park and they dropped eighty cubic yards of vinyl solid material that the city produces. So this is just the very beginning. I do have some video footage if you're interested, but the machine did a great job and crew loved it. Everybody had a chance for the most part to come out and just see kind of how it operates pretty straightforward, but that would be a really good investment. Um, I did go out on Friday after our safety meeting. I spent about two and a half hours just kind of doing an assessment on all of our raised planters. And noticed a few things. I'm just going to be kind of general with it. So just planting some seeds. We do have some overgrown trees that are actually causing curb damage lift uh, for sidewalks. So that's something we definitely will probably at some point want to prioritize. And probably have a plan over the next, you know, one to probably 10 years or maybe five to cycle those trees out, come up with, you know, some other options. And more importantly, prevent those trees from creating sidewalk clip, which in essence could cause trip hazards. In essence, people get hurt. Yeah, so also a couple of spots with leaking irrigation. I noticed there are a lot of it, the base of a lot of the tree wells, we actually have plugs. A lot of those are just PVC conduit. A lot of those are kicked over and broken. So that's, that's a hazard as well. So I went through, took notes. I'm going to get it all on paper. That way we can organize it, come up with a plan. So definitely something we're going to want to think about in the years to come. Uh, today our mower trailer arrived. We ordered that a couple of weeks ago. So the fleet section's working on that uplift and getting that ready out to service. Gator should be here in the middle of August. Uh, the crew, uh, water infrastructure got done with meter reading. Can actually get, glad Kyle's in the room. On Friday afternoon on forty ninth and Hell, we had a one inch waterline break and he was the lead for the day that afternoon and he jumped into action and got that baby repaired, but I don't want to add anything to it. It was a pretty rough line.
Actually, we had nine repair vans and several other valves and things on it. It was long overdue. We just didn't want to cut through it. We didn't have a choice. So yes, there's a patch job we've done there, but it's all brand new line. Yeah, I should be retired by the time that breaks.
So anyways, it is hard work on that and the crew they should, Brian, and that was literally Friday afternoon, what went wrong?
Oh, gee.
It was just one of those tears. So anyways, thank you for that.
No, just.
Um, we did get a water plant. We got one of the pump plant projects done. So two clear well pumps will replace uh, the, the news on that, there's three pumps that operate basically that, that facility that brings water into the clear well, gets mixed up, it's right from production up to. So what that did is two of the pumps were upsized. The third one was a smaller pump. That one was upgraded, so they're all now three the same. That small pump was removed out of service. And we have an additional pump that we're going to be able to put into reserve. So if any of those three pumps fail, we'll have one in reserve. Uh, the good news is, is in that facility, basically two of those pumps at most are operating at any one time. So they all cycle. They all get time on them. But the good news is, once we get that pump rebuilt, that the, the basically the five hundred and twenty gallon per minute pump that we pull, that'll be on the shelf. And so that builds a nice redundancy. And if we have a problem, then, you know, our facility there will be able to pump water to, to our customers. All right, UV system is still close to arrive, hasn't arrived yet. Wastewater's working on some skate upgrades. So with those capital dollars. Uh, we've been working on storm water. I know this isn't the time of year, but this is the time of year we need to make fixes before we have big problems. Uh, there was a sudden storm drain on Pioneer Beast. Crew got that all fixed, so that's been resolved. So last year, they're at Active, I think we told you about the water line or the drain line that was totally plugged. Well, we got all that functioning and working. The bad news was is it was working and caused undermining further north.
Oh, yeah.
So with the movement of that water, we had some sinkholes, so we had to go in, crew went in. It was last week, excavated, basically put a new line in there, was able to pack that in. So with one fix came another fix. But the good news is that full corridor up there, we don't have standing water like we used to have. So those improvements are being made, but I think long term, we're going to have to look at a more permanent solution up there, possibly moving that water up to Washington and then to the ditch there around twelve. So the good news is we're getting fixes there. The bad news is we might be still looking at some fixes later on down the road. This could last five, 10 years. I mean, it's hard to say. The good news is the water's moving. Crew's been doing sign maintenance, so we've had a few stop signs come down. Right away maintenance. We've done some sidewalk weed control. And it's sweeping the streets on Fridays. So other than that, I think it's pretty good up here at this point. WCI will be here this week doing their annual compact audit. So we got to do that once a year. So yeah.
That sounds like. All right. Uh. Transportation benefit district?
That's just part of the graph.
Okay, great. And please chief report. All right. So does the council have anything else they want to talk about? I personally would like to see the golf carts and the council rules both on the workshop schedule. And we've talked about them before and it just kind of never happened. So. All right. Oh, and I was going to ask about the door. The, wasn't there another door problem at a restroom after Fourth of July? Was it a door or what was?
Well, we have it right off. It was men's on.
Yeah.
It's street.
Yeah.
We ended up, there was a door jam, actually.
Oh, that's right. That's right then. Okay, that was just my note.
We are having a little bit an issue with.
Thank you.
I did talk to David earlier about the council rules and he said he was moving it on to Jerry. So.
Okay.
Okay. We should have a discussion about golf carts.
Golf carts too. Yeah, yeah. Got those in the notes for Jerry when he gets back. And then we'll be adjourning and going into a closed order meeting. So the council is adjourned. Oh, yeah.
Um, as far as fireside, there's one good, it's happy.
Sorry.
Happy last week. So we got a fire for the games about one nineteen.
I'm excited about that.
Should be pretty cool. We got a part of our members from Coast Guard, other fire stations coming this year, plus a lot of those. That'll be nice. But I want to bring up in that sheet that David handed out about the addresses on the homes. I know District Mill, Opa-ock, are pushing with the blue. You've seen the placards all of the down peninsula. We don't have anything long, which maybe we don't need to have something that big, but I would really like to stress addresses on homes. There's a lot of homes we go out at night, early morning on EMS calls and medics also. Your GPS is only so good on your phone. They're taking those locations. And I would like to see some kind of program, either something mailed out. We've done it a couple of years ago with your water bills. Just to remind people, hey, we can't find you, we can't help you if we don't pressure out of assistance. Not on a placard sign, side of the house. Something that sticks out, numbers that are the same color of the home. If we can somehow stress that to a public.
Is it possible for us to do a standardized one that we suggest that they purchase?
We, we could. I think, you know, when ninety one one first came out, I'm pretty sure we adopted the quote requires address number to enter your house. Well, if there's a case that we don't have that, we have to go to push. You're right. Some are hard to find. There's no doubt about it.
It's easy to get into the whole wanting to have them be pretty on your house and not stand out, but maybe right at the curb would be the best place for a really reflective one or something.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll have to think about it the best way. So I think what Kyle's looking at is like District and the law will tell how they standard sign they get with reflective white letters on it. And there's no reason we can't do something like that and pass the cost on to the customer that wants those.
That's what I was thinking.
They can still go out and get them.
It makes it so much easier for people if you tell them, this is, this is the thing, this is the size. Click this button and you order it from Amazon or whatever.
For shop.
Or shop local. Do we have anybody that does that locally? No. If you've got somebody locals that does that, I'm all for it. All right. I guess that's it. I don't want to miss anybody. I guess that's it. I don't want to miss anybody. All right.
Full session.
Yes, close session now.
All right.
Recording stopped.